All right. Welcome to the March 21st meeting of the Lincoln City Council. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll start out with our PulsePoint Foundation presentation.
Good afternoon, I'm Tom Cassidy, the Public Safety Director, and I'd like to introduce two members of the Board of Directors of the PulsePoint Foundation. Board Chairman Matt Stamey and Board Member Don Ledoux.
Good afternoon. I am Matt Stamey and this is my colleague, Don, just in case you need to get the names correct.
Matt and Don.
Thanks. Yeah, tough life. Anyway, we appreciate the opportunity to come address the council and we're pleased to be here to award the city of Lincoln the Award of Excellence by the Foundation. And you might say who, what, why, when, and where. I certainly think that that'd be inappropriate questions to ask. And the reason why we're here is because the city of Lincoln has done a fantastic job of adopting the PulsePoint app and really generating lots of interest. And if you relate it to the number of people in the population that you have here and the number of people who have signed up, that ratio is exponentially above the average cities that we serve. So, we came to Lincoln to understand and to explore all the good things that you've done and to congratulate you because what you've achieved, nobody else in the organization has achieved, that it's a PulsePoint city. And just a few fun facts about PulsePoint. Currently, we have about 635,000 users, of which 7,000-plus are in the city of Lincoln. And in that area, we've had approximately 21,000 responders, citizens, who have responded to a PulsePoint situation, that being that a cardiac arrest has transpired and CPR and AEDs are needed on scene by the citizens prior to the arrival of the first responders. In Lincoln's case, we've had 43 actual activations. Now, that's pretty impressive. The other interesting facts that made us come to Lincoln and say, what is it that you've done to make this successful? We looked at some of the statistics, one of which is, is that you had a three-month program to sign up X amount of folks, and in fact, you did that in 30 days. And then, the second statistic that kind of is interesting to us, in 87 days, you've signed up what you expected to do in one year. That's pretty impressive. I wish I had those stats at home. Anyway, PulsePoint's in about 100 and, or in 25 states, about 1,500 different communities. So, it brings us to the point of what we've recognized that you have done that made it successful. And some of the things that we find is, is that you put together a really impressive public outreach program. Now, we can have the greatest app in the world that will save a million lives, but if we don't have anybody that carries it on their phone, it's worthless. It's kind of like if you go to Big Game Saturday and you field three football players instead of 11, you're not going to be effective. So, if you can get all 11 folks on the field participating, then you're successful. So, that's kind of an example of what we say is a force multiplier. I think the creativity and originality, techniques that you've used, we have not seen in any of the other cities. Things like highway billboards, really engaging your hospital folks and your fire departments and getting community outreach so that the folks get involved in the program, understand it, and realize its usefulness. I kind of remember the old burma shave signs along the highway and so, it does work, it does make an appointment, and I think it's good. We're also impressed by your social media, and I think Tom Cassidy's blog, it's kind of like the Sunday newspaper, you could hardly wait to get it to read the comics. What's coming next? You know, what's Superman gonna do? It's been really fabulous. So, your use of social media has been very impressive. And I think combined with local news media, that's been great. And another impressive fact we see is that you've done a great job of distributing AEDs and then registering them so that the app becomes useful in the time of a crisis. And so, the bottom line is, is Donna and myself, we look forward to seeing the results that you're going to achieve by instituting PulsePoint. It's an exciting program. You've done an excellent job and we're here to present the city of Lincoln the award because we thought that you deserved the first ever award given by PulsePoint for your excellence. So, we're here to do that. Don had a little problem trying to get through the TSA today.
There was a whole pot down in Oakland today.
But, we'd like to offer the award.
And Matt, if I can, if I can ask Don, if you would, if you would have Kelly Davila accept the award on behalf of the city, she's really the person down in the trenches, in the basement of the building, that did all of the legwork that got us connected between our cab vendor and PulsePoint, and she's the one more than anyone here who deserves this recognition. So, Kelly, would you accept on behalf of the city, please?
Yes.
Kelly, we would like to present you the first ever Award of Excellence, so thank you for all your hard work and effort, and as we know, adoption saves lives, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce the rest of the team that helped work on the project, our interim Fire Chief, Tim Linky. Our firefighters have been great adopters and they've also spread PulsePoint to their own circle of acquaintances. If you look on a map and see where the most density is of PulsePoint adopters, it's at Bryan Medical Center, East and West. Dr. Jason Krueger, our medical director, has been a tireless supporter of a comprehensive approach to improve survivability from cardiac arrests. And it's great to have Dr. Krueger take time out of his busy day to be here and be part of the PulsePoint initiative. And Julie Ryder, the manager of our 911 Center, although it's got Lincoln Fire and Rescue's logo all over it, this has been a labor of love for the 911 Center. And although they're not, they're, they may not have their image on the app, that's where the rubber really met the road in getting this project done. And many thanks to all of our news media here in Lincoln. We've had great coverage about PulsePoint from our local TV stations, print media, and our local radio stations, and I think that's helped us tremendously. So, I really appreciate Matt and Don, you taking the time to come out all the way from California to enjoy this San Diego weather that we're experiencing today. We really, really appreciate it. Is there anyone else on the team that wants to make any remarks? Dr. Krueger?
Yeah, I'm just, a couple of comments here on just what we've done with this. Dr. Jason Krueger, the medical director for Lincoln Fire and Rescue. So, in 2014, our overall survival in Lincoln from out of hospital cardiac arrest from sudden cardiac death was 11%. In 2015, we got that up to 15%. And specifically, as we look at shockable cardiac arrest, in 2014, our overall survival was 23%, and in 2015, it was 45%. Year-to-date, in 2016, we are ahead of our 2015 numbers with an overall survival of above 20% and witnessed shockable cardiac arrest at 66%. So, this is, this is part of it, and this awareness is absolutely huge as we just get the message out that sudden cardiac arrest is a survivable disease. And just thank everybody here for their effort in this.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Tim, anyone?
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. We'll go on to the regular meeting. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The Order of Business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not in the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. If you need an agenda, we have some in the back of the room, or you can follow along on your smartphone by going to lincoln NE.gov and clicking on the City Council Meeting. Parking passes, we have some in the City Council Office, or Teresa has some up front here. Let's call the first item, please.
All right. We would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through five.
All right. Anyone here to speak to an item on our consent agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, next item, please.
All right. If not, we can vote on these items. Items one and two were introduced by Christensen.
So, moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl, discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried. Seven to zero. Item four was introduced by Eskridge.
So, moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy, discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then, are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session. I'll call items seven and eight together, they're the application of Hampton Inn and Suites for a Class I liquor license at 1055 West Bond Street and the related manager application of John Klimpel. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
John Klimpel, 5930 South 114th Street, Lincoln 68526.
All right, tell us about your application.
We are, we opened up a Hampton Inn out at the airport and we've been open for about five months and because of the competition out there, we've chosen to go ahead and now do a cocktail or whatever, free reception from basically Tuesday through Thursday, maybe Monday through Thursday, but from basically five to eight for our guests.
Okay, questions? All right. I guess nurse knows questions. Thank you very much.
All right, I'll just write this down.
Yeah. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right, next item, please.
All right, next is item nine, manager application of Chris Rosiak for Night Owl Pub at 3233 and 1/2 South 13th Street. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, tell us about your application and state your name and address.
Chris Rosiak, I'm at 5625 South 38th Street.
Okay, and tell us about your application.
Basically, I'm just stepping in as manager. One of our partners has recently sold and it's, it's time that we need to replace him.
Okay. Questions? John?
Well, we've had a report of some things. Now, your partner that's leaving, is that Mr. Rutt?
Yes.
When we had issued this, or Nebraska Liquor Control Commission originally issued this, there was a restriction on there relating to no personal or business alcohol-related violations would happen from March 14th of 2014.
Yes.
Can you kind of describe to us what's transpired since then?
What do you mean, "transpired"?
Well, as I understand it, there were some infractions.
Yeah, last Halloween, we had, we had a haunted house and a little incident where someone called the cops mistaking us for, I don't know, robbers or something. We had a hearing and they extended it. Other than that, that was it. The council looked over it. They said it showed there was no malicious intent, and so, just, they gave us another year on our probation.
Other questions? Roy?
Now, because of the percent ownership which you had when it came to us the first time?
Yeah.
This complete background investigation on you was not performed at that time, but has been now, and there's quite a bit on here. And, you know, suspended license several times, no proof of financial responsibility, had a bench warrant issued, one, two, three, four, five, six times since 2012, marijuana, possession of stolen property, you know, all sorts of things that are kind of disturbing. Can you give us some kind of explanation, how you want us to view this?
I think, I think everyone has a past. I think sometimes there's just a point where you kind of give up, you know, business kind of changed that, running the business, you have to be responsible. I've been behind the scenes for two years and it's just been straightforward. The opportunity has really changed a lot for me. I don't want to be, trying to be a scapegoat, but a lot of my issues were financial and, you know, things have just changed. And all I can do is just keep moving forward with the business.
Other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward.
Would it be appropriate to have Officer Investigator Schaefer come forward?
Absolutely.
Please.
Thank you.
Investigator Schaefer, Lincoln Police Department?
I assume you, well, you prepare these reports and then forward them to us under the police chief's signature.
Yes.
Could you comment on this particular applicant and...
Well, Councilman Christensen was correct. During the original investigation for the liquor license, Mr. Rosiak did not receive the full background check due to the percentage of ownership at that time, but as the manager and increased, well, as the manager on the liquor license primarily, then he does have the full background investigation. Although not mentioned specifically in the report that was given to you, there were a percentage, about over half of the listed violations there were not disclosed on the application for manager as well.
Now, Mr. Rosiak was mentioning that operating the business or being in the businesses changed him, and I believe that would go back then to March of 2014, if I understand the time sequence here, the chronology. And then, I guess since that time, there's been the Halloween event. Are you familiar with that? Or is his rendition of that correct, that maybe it was misreported or at least mischaracterized?
Yeah, as I understand it, I don't want to misquote or mistake for Mr. Rosiak, but it was a promotional, I think the intent of it was a promotion for a Halloween party or haunted house that they had in the lower parking level of their business, and the intent was for them to attract business or people to go to it. The actual result of it was that there were several phone calls to the police because they were reporting that they were in traffic with these Halloween masks stopping cars. A few folks thought that they were going to be robbed or carjacked, and when the officers arrived, that's, they found the two of them in the street simulating some Halloween-type, like one of them was pretending to bite the other's neck and it just, it didn't go over well, as I understand it. So, they received citations at that time and were found guilty of disturbing the peace. And then, there was a subsequent administrative process for the liquor license where they received a license suspension at that time and then extension to their original restriction.
So, that would go another year into 2017 then?
Correct, yes.
If we, any suggestions on approval, I mean, with the State Liquor Control Commission adding that year and with the, what, 20-day suspension or something, they're going to make the ultimate decision, but...
Well, I do have, I do believe that the Nebraska State Patrol investigator is, has or will be requesting a show cause hearing based on the, the State Patrol's investigation, and then it would be up to the Liquor Commission to act upon that recommendation to have the show cause hearing. My opinion is that they probably will, based on the request from the investigator to have one. But in terms of, I guess I don't personally have a recommendation, one way or the other, for approval or denial. Is that, was that the question? Okay.
Roundabout way, yes.
Roy?
So, if the Nebraska State Patrol persuades the Liquor Control Commission to have a hearing, there'll be a hearing, obviously. If, for some reason, they don't choose to do that and we approve this, there will be no hearing, correct? Correct. So, the only way we can assure that there is a hearing at the Liquor Control Commission is to disapprove this, correct? Correct. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Just, can you help me understand the multiple lists of suspended license eligible? Help us understand what that means, because, you know, we are asked to evaluate things that are relevant and, and look at the repeated occurrence of certain events, but can you help us understand what that, that means to be eligible?
Right, when the Department of Motor Vehicles suspends an individual's driver's license, let's say it's for one year, after that one-year period, the person would be eligible for reinstatement. So, when this, like I'm looking at the first one, suspended license eligible, so he was convicted of this or stopped and written, issued this ticket after the period of suspension, but prior to actually paying the reinstatement fee. So, his license was still suspended, but he had not gone through the process to reinstate the license, so they consider that suspended, but eligible. The other would be just driving under suspension, not eligible. So, it would have been within the suspension period.
So, is this a, an offense of driving while the license was suspended, or?
Yes, it's still considered driving under suspension, it's just their...
Simply by the fact that this has not been applied for yet, is that right?
Right, they're just acknowledging that, yes, the license was suspended, however, the driver at that time was eligible for reinstatement, they just hadn't...
Just hadn't done it yet.
Hadn't done it yet, and that, you know, for whatever reason, they may not, sometimes they're required to have an SR22 or they're required to pay reinstatement fee, so they haven't accomplished something in order, or just haven't gone back in to get their license, but something hasn't happened for them to have been able to go back in to get their license.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
I would just like, I'd like to give the applicant a chance to address, provide some explanation about whether or not, about why the suspended license remained...
Yep, come back up.
Unactivated, if you'd, if you'd like that opportunity.
Yeah, definitely. It's, excuse me, it's going to start off sounding bad, but I've got, I had a DUI about five years ago, four years ago. What happens is, is I have to have SR22 insurance for the next three years. I had Progressive, they take it directly out of my bank account. If ever that money doesn't go through, Progressive alerts the DMV and your license is suspended instantly. I actually didn't know it was suspended until I got stopped. And then, so I go back to reinstate my, my insurance, all it was is not having insurance. With the DMV, with an SR22, if you can't afford your insurance, you're considered suspended. I don't make excuses, but I'm very self-reliant and work is very important to me. And it came to where I was driving to try to work, to pay my insurance, to driving to work, to try to pay my tickets, to just, you know, getting an Uber or Lyft completely to try to pay the tickets just to get insurance, just to be legal to drive, to make it to work. There's not many excuses, but, you know, it was about five tickets within two months. This isn't a big span of time, this isn't, the cops were all, it was kind of in the same area, and it's, like I say, there's no excuse, but it was just, just the place I was at, you know? I gotta get to work, there's no excuses for me, and so, technically, that's not an excuse at all, but it does come down to just, just a financial place. It was a low two months of trying to get on top, and ever since, you know, worst part is, is once it laps, they restart your three years again. So, now, I'm about six months away from three years and all of it gets wiped off, the SR22, the DUI, all my suspended license tickets come off my insurance this fall.
And you do have insurance now?
Yeah, everything's, yeah. So, it's, it, like I say, it's not an excuse, but it did come down to kind of a financial rut where, you know, I couldn't just not go to work, and I don't have family here, I live alone, so I'm glad you're able to let me say something about it because it just appears a lot worse than it was. I don't like looking as if I'm blatantly breaking the law, but that's just kind of how it's going to come across.
Thank you.
John?
Just for clarification, sir, you said a couple of months, it looks like the suspended licenses started in May of 2013 and went into the following January, which is about eight months. Am I misreading something?
Okay, there might, yeah, I mean, the most, the four of them or however many should be all within, and there might have been another one, because this happened twice where my insurance, I just didn't have enough to pay it, they dock it off, and then, you know, I took risks I shouldn't have. I mean, hindsight, I shouldn't have at all. I mean, today, I'd just catch a Lyft or, you know, but...
If we, as Mr. Christensen was noting, if we deny this, then that would force the hearing, the show cause hearing at the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. It sounds like that might be to your benefit and everyone's benefit to ensure that occurs so you can clear the error, does that...
Sure, you know, I know we've had this issue before with our last partner, and then, now bringing this up again because I got looked over, it just all looks bad. And I was prepared to just be able to, you know, go with how you guys felt because the first meeting didn't go well here, and it, it had to do with a lot of the same issues. And I don't want this to feel reoccurring. Like I said, I've been run, I've been behind running the bar for the last two years, and I'm almost 100% sure without any of the Halloween incidences, between personal life and business, we have not had a single problem, so...
I compliment you on your attitude, I just wanted to share with you some thoughts I have and we'll have to see what my colleagues think, but thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move on to the next item, please.
All right, next is item 10, manager application of Matt Taylor for Tavern on the Square at 816 P Street. Raise your right hand, man. Raise your right hand, man. Do you solemnly swear from the te- uh, testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Matt Taylor, 1416 South 14th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68504, I think is what I am. Open to questions.
Yeah, tell us about your application, just change of managers?
Yeah, so I, I've owned Tavern on the Square for, ooh, coming up on six years now. And also it's a kinda overlap license with the other room. We added Jill Coxon as a manager on our license, a crazy, insane, talented mixologist. And, and I have a policy that I wanna show growth in this industry to my employees and, you know, we believe that you can grow your employees and maybe they leave and they outgrow ya. But maybe worse, you don't grow 'em and they stay and they're terrible employees. So we've, we regrew Jill and she outgrew us. She's opening a bar in Kansas City. She was our manager on our liquor license. I'm reapplying to, to fill that void as she leaves.
Okay. Questions? Alright, thank you very much. Appreciate what you do.
For our clerk's benefit, I will declare, I'll abstain from voting since this is tentative mine.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Alright, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Alright, last then is item 11, application of Casey's General Store 2973 to modify its presently licensed area described as one-story building approximately 47 feet by 77 feet to an area described as a one-story building approximately 47 feet by 77 feet. The inside of the store is to be remodeled. The dimensions will not change at 3500 North 48th Street.
Hi, I'm Michelle Kreitz, 2111 Southwest 18th Street here in Lincoln and I'm the district manager for the store, so...
So we're here because you're moving things around, bigger store?
Yes, what it is, is when we first acquired that store from Cabaret Loaf's a few years ago, it had a Domino's on it where their contract expired, so we're going into the Domino's section and bringing our pizza and donuts in there.
Sounds good. Questions? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Alright, we can vote.
Chair, yes. Now, first of all, Madam Clerk, do we need to do anything official on item six since it was withdrawn?
The application was, was withdrawn, Jeff. Do we need to do anything on that?
So we don't need to remove it or anything, just I, so, I'd move approval of items seven, eight, nine, and 11.
I'd like to say something and, and I'm gonna move disapproval of number nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, yes, I'm sorry.
And what I'd like to say about this is, Mr. Rosiak, this is not because I'm against you or your establishment. For full disclosure, I am a partial owner of a business that's right up above you. And I can say from my, my perspective and the perspective of at least some of my partners, that your establishment, with the exception of the Halloween incident, has been a good neighbor in the shopping mall. And I'm gonna vote against approval here because I want to guarantee that there will be a hearing at the State Liquor Control Commission. I think it's the best for everyone.
So we have two competing motions.
And I, I, I had meant, I, Mr. Christensen is right, I had meant to move denial of item nine, so if I could, I'd, I'd restate mine as six, seven, eight, and 11.
Seven, eight, 11?
Seven, eight, 11.
Roy's doing nine.
And I will remove deny, denial of number nine.
We probably need to take them one at a time.
Second, I'll second yours.
Okay, so seven, eight, and...
11.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve seven and eight, deny nine, and approve 10 and 11 that was seconded by Roy and I'll open the floor to discussion.
No, let me clarify, the first motion is Camp moving approval of seven, eight, and 11.
Okay.
And then Christensen seconded that. And then Christensen is mov- moving denial of number nine.
Okay.
There's been no motion on 10 yet.
So we have no action on 10?
Not yet.
Well, yeah, separate mo- separate motion.
You know what? I think we should step back and take each one of these items individually since we have the abstention and the denial.
Okay.
So would you withdraw your motion and then we'll start and go, yeah, we'll go one at a time?
Item seven.
We do seven and eight, yeah.
Seven and eight, okay.
Okay. Seconded by Roy, discussion. Alright, call the roll, please.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. On number nine, I have Christensen moving. I don't have a second yet.
Seconded by Carl.
Okay.
Discussion.
This is a move...
Is denial of number nine.
This is for denial, mhm.
Denial of number nine, discussion on the denial of number nine. John?
Well, and I think as we said a little bit in the testimony there, I'm gonna support the denial so that we ensure there is a show cause hearing at the state level and that way the applicant can really get a full discussion and hopefully proceed along on a positive track.
Carl?
Yeah, and this, this is the same action we took two years ago, I believe it was. And, and you did have the hearing and, and you got your, your license. And, and that's, that's the same path we're, we're going and, and I, I do appreciate the applicants being here today and, and the, the approach with which you've taken this, this hearing. I think you've been respectful and, and we wish you well.
Larian?
Well, it's always important to come into these public hearings with an open mind and as I looked at the application, had concerns, of course, as we all share about the number of violations, but it has helped to get some context around what the suspended license and eligibility for reinstatement, how that's defined and, and some of the reasons why there were so many within a short month, several month period. And listening to Mr. Rosiak's explanation, I'm inclined to not deny the application, but maybe recommend instead that we add a probationary period like we have with other applicants. And I guess that's, that's a course of action I would, I'd rather see. It sounds like there is a decent chance that the State Patrol would still recommend the show cause hearing and I guess to the extent that this body has mixed views, it might be important to represent that to the Liquor Commission of the state.
Cindy then, then Roy.
Is, I'm wondering if that's a motion because I, I feel the same way. I know that when there's a suspension of a license and it's out, they're eligible, that there can be any number of things, a class that hasn't yet been taken or just getting the money. And in the end, it ends up more expensive when you get tickets for it, which is unfortunate. But I do understand the, the desperate need to be able to get to work and so forth. And, and I know many incidences where people have had a license suspended and not even known because the bank triggered something to the insurance company and the insurance company triggered something to the DMV and you haven't gotten the letter yet or you've moved or whatever. So I would rather see that course of action also.
Roy?
I think it would be, from my perspective, I want to just guarantee that this hearing takes place at the, at the state level. And I think it's fully appropriate that we make sure we have a representative from the city there to explain what our thoughts are on this, to give them the best opportunity to, you know, have their hearing and understand what, that we have mixed feelings about this whole issue. But I'm still gonna vote, vote for approval of a denial.
Jane?
Uh, I agree with Cindy and Larian on this and mostly because if the state wants to have a show cause hearing, then they can decide to have a show cause hearing. I think that we've received explanation here that's reasonable. And we've also have a business that while they've had some issue in the couple of years that have, they've had a liquor license, it wasn't significant enough for the Liquor Commission to revoke that license. And, you know, I, I think we should be supporting this moving forward, recognizing that there have been some significant traffic violations that are listed in this application. But I'd, I'd urge my colleagues to vote against the denial and support a motion that would probably cusp subsequent the denial to continue on the same path we have before with, which is giving these guys a chance, but also extending a one-year probationary period that would say somewhat the same, no personal or business alcohol-related violations against this gentleman for another year from today's date. So I'd urge my colleagues to vote against.
Appreciate what you say. Did I understand during the testimony that that has already been extended a year?
It, it has, but we have the ability to do it here on the man- manager application, to put a year on his manager's application. They have it on the business and the license itself, but I think it's reasonable to give Mr. Rosniak the opportunity to continue on with his business.
Alright, I've said what I wanna say. Call the roll.
Eskridge?
No.
Fellers?
No, no is a...
On the denial.
Yeah, no.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion lost, three to four.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve with the recommendation for a one-year extension on the, of the manager's application on this probation period or...
I'll give the second to Cindy on that. Discussion on that. Alright, I appreciate my colleagues and their support on that. Call the roll, please.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Motion carried six to one.
Alright, move on to item 10, please.
Move approval?
I would move, yeah, I would move approval of number 10.
Second.
Seconded by Larian. Discussion. Alright, call the roll, please.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp is abstaining. Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Alright, item 11?
It was six to zero.
Six to zero, thank you, John.
Item 11?
I'll move that.
Alright.
Second.
Seconded by Roy, discussion. Alright, call the roll, please.
Does someone have 11?
We need to vote on that.
Okay. So 11 was moved by Carl.
Seconded by Roy.
Thank you. Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next then, public hearing resolutions. Item 12, authorizing the mayor to execute a multi-year contract with funding appropriations coming from more than one fiscal year CIP for the Yankee Hill 81st to Highway 2 major roadway project.
Good afternoon, Thomas Schaefer, interim Public Works Director, here to answer any questions you may have. This is, this and the next item are a contract that we have bid for Yankee Hill Road. And as such, the funding will be from not only this existing fiscal year and prior that we've had, but in the upcoming fiscal year. And as such, we need to authorize the mayor to sign this contract so we may begin construction.
Alright, questions for Thomas? Alright, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Alright, next item, please.
Alright, next is item 13, authorizing the mayor to execute a multi-year contract with funding appropriations coming from more than one fiscal year CIP for the Yankee Hill 70th to 81st major roadway project.
Slightly different stretch of Yankee Hill Road, this starting at 70th and ending at 81st, while the prior one started at 81st and went to Highway 2.
Alright, questions? Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Alright, next item, please.
Next then is item 14, approving a contract between the city and Motorola Solutions for a county-wide simulcast trunked radio system.
Jeff Repatrick, city attorney, I, I spoke to you briefly about this during the organizational meeting and said that I was gonna suggest that we move this to next week. During the time, since then, we've been continuing to work on this contract. There are reasons why we prefer to have this voted on today, but I don't have a completed contract to give you yet. So what I would ask this council to do is to move this to the end of your agenda and perhaps by then we'll have a completed contract that we can brief you on. If not, then we'll have no choice but to bring it up next week.
Jeff, how significant would the changes to the contract be from what we've been provided with already to what we might see at the end of the council meeting?
One of the things you noticed as you looked through that contract was there were some blank spaces there. So those will be filled in, but there were also a few, you know, how significant they are, whether they're important enough that we're negotiating with Motorola on them. I, I don't know all the details of that. All I know is it's kind of a work in progress. It would be to the, to our benefit, I think Motorola's benefit, if we could get this approved today, things like bonding. As I think the council's aware, there is a significant price break if this is approved by the end of the month. And so we definitely wanna have it done by next Monday, but for purposes of bonding and so on, we'd really like to have it done today.
Your friend.
Bob Walla, purchasing agent, and the changes that we are putting in right this moment are very minor. One of them is ju- was just an error in missing one of the exhibits. The other two are just clarifications of delivery times and payment. And so I know that Mr. Huggenberger is working on it right at this minute and he will have them down here as soon as those three changes were finished. Otherwise, the contract, we believe, is complete.
Is it mostly just the items that were highlighted in yellow for us that are missing?
The, the contract that was lis- that was issued last week with the yellow in it was the preliminary contract that we used for our negotiations, which we held this week. So all of those spaces have been filled in in addition to other terms that were negotiated during the period with Motorola the last three or four days.
Okay, Carl?
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair looks guessing at our, our agenda, which is hard to do. It looks like maybe we've got 15 or 20 minutes worth of business left to do today, so...
I think it's possible.
Okay.
We would not be asking you to stay here beyond the course of your normal business, though.
Could stand at ease for a few minutes if they were imminent.
We could.
He's, your last agenda item took a little longer than I thought it would, so he, he should be okay. He's working on it, so...
Okay.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
Alright, other questions? Alright, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. It'd help us kill some time. Alright.
Question actually for Cassidy, if Tom Cassidy would come forward.
That's right.
It's a slow march.
When, when we first started discussing the radio system, the cost estimates were at over $20 million and this contract appears to be around like 9.1, is that right?
Well, it's, it's somewhere between 9.8 and about 9.4, depending on whether we do the state option or not. That's, it's written as a standalone system with a provision for a discount if we adopt the state core. And yes, we originally expected the radio system total project to be about 20.5 million. Now, the, the vendor of the radio system is only one of the expenses, although it's the vast, vast majority. We have another two and a half million dollars in anticipated expenses for the other things involved in the system that are not part of the vendor response.
But that difference is almost the amount of sales tax revenue we expect to collect in one year, isn't it?
It is. Maybe not quite that large, but it's, it's eight million dollars, between eight and nine.
Okay. And then the contract shows the city, you know, footing the entire cost of the radio system, but, but acknowledges that there will be other users on the system, the UNL, the county, LPS, who are also beneficiaries. Can you speak to how, how there'll be some interplay there and sharing the costs?
Yes, about one-third of the total users on the city's radio...
to operate the radio system, and that'll be amortized over a period of 12 years. And they'll also pay for their radios. So they'll either buy their own radios through us, or we'll provide them with a radio and they'll pay for it over time. It'll be their choice.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, Director Cassidy. When, we got some notes this past week. Did I understand correctly that this increase from the 9.1 to 9.4 was because there were some more users and you need more radios? So would that go to say that with these additional users, that they will reimburse us for that additional amount at some point?
Any of those, any of those additional radios that are for non-city of Lincoln users, yes, that would generate additional revenue. What we did, Councilman, is after we were done negotiating most of the contract, we went back to all of our radio system users to update our accounts and make sure that we had their, their best estimate on the number of radios that they actually needed. That resulted in, in, in increase. These radios are quite expensive, so if you increase the number of radios by a fairly small percentage, say 3%, 4%, it's actually, you know, pretty expensive to do that. And that's what happened, is we had a number of users that, when they actually had to give us their firm count, added additional radios.
And so as a result, because there are outside parties, they'll reimburse us, so really the contract isn't increasing that much by the fair summary?
Well, some of those increases were increases for city users. For example, the police department increased the number of radios that, that it needed. But to the extent that the, the increase in radios are for non-city users, all of those are reimbursed to the city.
And they'd be within that 9.4 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So given the, the lower cost, much lower cost of the radio system than anticipated, how much sooner will we be able to get started on the fire stations and the joint police fire station? What kinds of changes or how are you adapting the plans that the city has in place to start those projects sooner, presumably?
That's a really good question. Obviously, the, the fact that these bids came in considerably lower than expected means that we'll have paid off the cost of the radio system quite a bit earlier, and that means we'll be able to start the fire station work earlier. So I think we may be able to get to the market with a RFP for Architectural Services sometime this fall, and construction services beginning sometime in, you know, when the ground thaws in the spring of 2017. So it moves us up at least six months, maybe more.
Thank you.
Which is really good news for us, by the way.
Other questions? The state system, seems like it would save us some money. Whose decision is that? Is that our decision to join the state system, or mutual decision to join the state system?
Councilman, the, the ballot language that established the sales tax increment created a citizen oversight committee, and that's a 13-person committee. I'm one of the members. Councilman Camp is one of the members. That committee is making, you know, providing the advice and making the decisions on how we move forward on these things. So what's going to happen is, the committee is going to want to know, they've already told me that they want to know, if and when we reach an agreement with the state. And I've told the committee that I'll either be informing them within the next few weeks that we've reached an agreement with the state to share the state core, or I'll be meeting with them to provide them with a really darn good reason why not, and then take whatever further instruction that they want to give us at that time. So we're working on that agreement with the state. We have our next meeting tomorrow. We've, we've, we've actually drafted a little bit of language that is a starting point, and we'll continue to try to hammer out the details of that. And I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to come with a mutually agreeable memorandum of understanding or in a local agreement.
Is it a negotiation of joining? Do we have to pay in? Or?
Well, let me explain it like this. We have a very valuable asset after we've built this radio system. It's a 800 megahertz trunked P-25 radio system that's engineered for indoor portable radio coverage. Those are the handheld radios that first responders carry. That's a very valuable asset that the state can use. They have a lot of employees here that work in Lancaster County. They're in and out of the same buildings that we are, this building, the State Office Building, the State Capitol, the State Correctional Institutions, and so forth. So that's a valuable asset. The state also has a valuable asset. They've got a functioning P-25 VHF radio system. It's not engineered for indoor portable radio coverage, but nonetheless, a lot of the costs of the, the, what I call the brains of the system, the core, have, have already been undertaken by the state. So I think there's a reasonable chance that we may be able to trade consideration with one another, but that's what we're negotiating about now, is the terms under which we do that.
And Mr. Chair, it appears that maybe the Motorola representative's here, so maybe it's all done.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Please come forward. All right. We'll move on to the next item, please.
All right. Next is our public hearing ordinance's second reading. I'll call items 15 and 16 together. They're annexation 16001, annexing approximately 28.87 acres, and change of zone 16001 for a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R3 on those acres at South 70th and Rockabye Road.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Mike Eckert, here today on behalf of Rockabye Holdings LTD. This is a fairly straightforward item on your agenda. This is an annexation of just some adjacent acres to single-family homes that are being constructed this year and preparing for, for next year's construction season. It's part of the Rockabye Coalition Annexation Agreement that we completed here a couple years ago, and so this is the next phase. And I didn't plan on saying much, but I can, any of you that know me know I can talk for five minutes and not say a whole lot, so if you need me to, I will.
Questions? Carl?
Yes. So 29 acres, is that right?
Yes.
How many lots would you anticipate?
I, I believe in this phase, there's approximately 60 lots in that total. There's some green space in there for drainage ways, and so our density isn't quite normal, if you will.
All single-family?
Yeah, all single-family continuation of Grandview Estates is the name of it. And so, yeah, just...
Larry?
What would be the estimated timeline of completion of these homes, construction?
I would say that based on the current market, when these are brought on, let's say later this year or early next year, that they would, most of the homes in this area of annexation would be completed by the end of 2017.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see if there's anybody, anybody else wishing to speak to this item? Please come forward. All right. Staff questions?
Could Director Cassidy come on back? Thank you. This item gives us another opportunity just to talk about the, the improvement in emergency response times that's coming sooner than expected. In this case, we're annexing 29 acres that are at, gonna be as close, much closer to one of the new stations, and that will make an incremental improvement in emergency response time. Can you speak to that? Because we heard these, these homes are going to be done around the end of 2017. The timeline for the fire stations might be maybe another year out, but are you comfortable with that? And can you speak to the emergency response times for this area?
I, I am. 70th and Rockabye Road. Rockabye Road is a section line, and it's two miles south of Pine Lake Road. So we're going to be building a station in the vicinity of 70th and Pine Lake Road, which will be about two miles from this area that's being annexed. And two miles in, in, in an urban environment is about four minutes of travel time, and that's our target, of course. We want to, we want to have as many rooftops within that four-minute umbrella as we can for travel time. Right now, if that area were annexed today, the emergency response from the closest fire station would be coming from 48th and Highway 2, from Station Number 7, I'm sorry, Number, Station Number 6. Or it would be coming from Station Number 12, which is 84th and South Street. And those are well beyond reasonable time in an urban environment. We'd be talking about travel times in the, probably in the eight-minute range. So if we're able to start on these stations and get cracking on that during 2017, there shouldn't be a fairly short window of time during which the new development out there at 70th and Rockabye Road is, is just too far away.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. All right. Any other testifiers or questions? All right. We'll move on to the next item.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions. Item 12 is the multi-year contract for Yankee Hill 81st to Highway 2 major roadway project, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion. All right. Call the roll, please.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Number 13 is authorizing the mayor to execute a multi-year contract for the Yankee Hill 70th to 81st major roadway project, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion. All right. Call the roll, please.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 14 is the contract with Motorola for a countywide simulcast trunked radio system, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 14 is the contract with Motorola for a countywide simulcast trunked radio system, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second by Learyan.
Can we look at the contract?
Have a motion to amend? Okay.
Would...
Thank you. Can someone walk us through the changes?
Yeah, let's walk through the changes. I think Steve Huggenberger's fingers are still on fire.
And they shouldn't be on fire. There are two changes to this document.
Thank you.
The, from the introduced copy. Oh. This doesn't have any blank spaces in it. No, I guess they have now. My memory is refreshed that you were given a copy that had a lot of blank spaces in it. All of those blank spaces have been filled in by purchasing and Motorola. I don't know, you want to go through those? I don't know what they all are.
So basically, on the time schedule that we're on, we put the blank contract out in front of you last week, and we began negotiations with Motorola on Tuesday, and they continue through Wednesday. And then since then, we've been making adjustments here and there as we get through them, with the final ones just given to us by Steve with the documents you have in front of you. Just to give you a few of the things that were significantly added to this in the first part of Exhibits, all of the dates and the documents that are associated with the contract have been filled in so that they do become part of the contract. The next significant change would be over in 3.4, which is on page three. This gives this specific information in regards to additional equipment and the software, the beginning timeline being April 1st of '16 through system acceptance, which is defined in this document as well, kind of the final determination that everything's going to work. Also throughout here, we go into the details of what our discounts are throughout the period for the equipment that we're ordering, and then also just a couple other things in here in regards to state of Nebraska and other political subdivisions can piggyback off of this contract during this period at a 40% discount, which is about 13% more than what they can get it for at this point. So we got that in there. We also clarified some information in regards to when invoices must be paid according to milestones. Yes, sir.
Could I ask for clarification? You said it's about 13% more, so they can buy it less expensively elsewhere, so they probably won't piggyback?
No, we're, we're 13% better than what their prices are at this point. They use a Western States contract at 27% discount, and ours is at 40 for this specific equipment. Some of the other details in here in regards to the equipment itself and how we take delivery for it, certain dates have been added into it as Exhibits. They're kind of milestone dates when performance is required, but then also is payment due within 30 days after that. We, we did quite a bit of negotiation in that area so that the bonding money or the, I'm sorry, the tax money that's coming in can keep up with the expenses that are coming in as well. And so Tom did a lot of figuring throughout the entire two-to-three day period and came, I think we came up with a very good solution there for the city.
Mr. Walla did, I know in our committee, we talked about trying to meet the cash flow of the sales tax, so are we within that stream of cash flow? I know there's talk, do we do any, we, we pledged not to do any borrowing and so...
Yes, we are. So our negotiations with Motorola, that was one of the chief things the city was seeking to accomplish, is to have a, a schedule of payment that would meet the, exactly when our revenue is coming in, and I think we've accomplished that.
Thank you.
There's some other key dates in here in regards to final access, acceptance and system acceptance. You'll see that word mentioned quite a bit. The testing that's involved with this has to be done at a, at a time when there is full foliage, including like corn. That itself will take, I don't know if it totally reduces the performance of the radio, but it is part of what needs to be taken into consideration to make sure that we're getting the percentage of coverage that we've been guaranteed in this contract. So that's what, it does take us through into next spring for that part of it.
Hold on one second. Teresa, have we moved the item?
Yes.
We did? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
We've not amended yet, though.
No. I just wanted to make sure we moved it.
Yep.
Okay. We did do clarifications on warranties and claims, and also on returns that we would have to perform during the period of the contract and beyond that. We also put in liquidated damages associated with this contract so that in the event that foliage, including like corn. That itself will take, I don't know if it totally reduces the performance of the radio, but it is part of what needs to be taken into consideration to make sure that we're getting the percentage of coverage that we've been guaranteed in this contract. So that's what, it does take us through into next spring for that part of it.
Hold on one second. Teresa, have we moved the item?
Yes.
We did? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
We've not amended yet, though.
No. I just wanted to make sure we moved it.
Yep.
Okay. We did do clarifications on warranties and claims and also on returns that we would have to perform during the period of the contract and beyond that. We also put in liquidated damages associated with this contract so that in the event that performance was not being made according to the milestones and the final approval, we do have the option there to make sure that we are making up the money it's costing us for a delay in the project and in the implementation. The other part of this contract that it goes into is the long-term maintenance and the other pieces that go into making sure the radio is running for a period of up to five years. So there is a cost associated with that, and it is addressed in section three point four as well. I'm sorry, not in three point four. Five point one, which indicates that there's a four-year lifecycle support plan at a cost of one hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four, which is broken out in one of the exhibits, too, that covers maintenance and support by Motorola. Those are the highlights. Real quick, I don't know, Tom, if you want to add some more to it?
Just, just two that I'd like to highlight. Bob mentioned it, but Motorola has agreed to basically provide us with a refund for any radios that we've ordered that are really above our needs. So if some of those counts were a little high, we'll be able to return those radios for a full refund. And they've also given us a firm price on what, if we were to join the state corps and then within twenty-four months after system acceptance want to separate from the state, they've given us a firm price on, on what that would cost. And these were negotiated into the contract as a way of protecting the city's interest in the, in the event that, that we would join the state corps and then not be a satisfied customer. So I think we've, we've done a really nice job, and Bob's worked really hard on this and helped us to protect the city from several of the things that, that we could anticipate.
Cindy?
First, I want to say that I appreciate having something with the blanks filled in, because as an attorney, I can't even imagine voting on something that didn't have it. But I did want to ask if there's anyone from Motorola here today?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, good, because that's, I want to ask some questions before we take a vote. Thank you.
Leary?
Bob, is there anything about this contract that is unusual, you know, relative to other contracts that would come before council? Anything else that needs to be pointed out to council about the nature of this contract that you haven't already discussed?
I don't believe there's anything that I would consider unusual. Steve? Yeah, we've been communicating with Steve and the attorneys for Motorola over the last five days, I believe it has been, to make sure that we are, you know, we're covered on our end, reducing our risk as much as possible, so.
Okay.
I believe we've gotten pretty much everything.
Well, I guess then I just want to follow up and ask, you know, who has had time to review this final version of this contract that was just produced? Are we all, what's your comfort level, you know, taking action on this right now?
This final, this version that you have here, like I said, there were three minor changes that were offered this after, or late this morning into early afternoon. Prior to that, Tom, Ray Ryan, Julie Ryder, Mr. Huggenberger, is that pretty much all of them?
That's it.
Those, they have been involved in reviewing all of the documents as they've been produced all the way along the way since last Tuesday. So we've all had our look at it. The other people that have looked at this on a very detailed basis is our consultants, which is Alert. And they have given us some suggestions, and in fact, one last suggestion that we just put in was from them that I got at about eleven-thirty this morning. So that's, was part of the, a little bit of the delay as well. So they have been extremely helpful in this process. They brought out a lot of things that I would not have picked up on immediately, and I believe that what we've put into there from their input has been a great benefit to the city.
Do you want to speak to that as well? You're, you're comfortable with this coming in at this point?
Absolutely. We've, we've had all the drafts, and this last little bit of language that we were working on, Bob and I and others have looked at this over the course of the weekend, and we got a good suggestion from Alert and Associates on how to word that this morning, and that's been incorporated now. So we're, we're quite up to speed on what's in the contract, and I have no second thoughts at all about, about taking action on it.
Thank you.
Roy?
So, so everybody's clear? The final contract price is nine point eight million dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I believe that's the maximum, isn't it? If we don't do the state system, then there's a lower amount if we use the state.
Right. That's correct. If, if we exercise the option to go with the state corps, it's nine million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I have one more question. We've talked about the people that have reviewed this item, but we haven't, this just was rushed to us about ten minutes ago. We should, I, I wonder if we should exercise a little bit of, well, if we should slow things down. We're about to spend nine point eight million dollars here. I wonder if we could do a one leak delay? Would that slow anything down from your end? That cause any problems for Motorola to give the public a chance to review a document where we spend nine point eight million dollars?
I guess from my perspective, the reason that we asked for second reading this week and the way that we moved it forward is that the deadline for us to get the rebates, or not the rebates, but the discounts that have been offered to us is March thirty-first. And because we were very sure that we were going to have a final contract to you today or before today, we wanted to try and get second reading this week. If you were to hold it off one week, we would need signature immediately following that in order to have it to Motorola fully executed by the thirty-first.
Our next meeting is the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
So we could have it signed and to them overnighted? I'm sure we could figure something out there.
Well, if the mayor signs it right away.
Correct.
If, if he would have any questions and holds it for any reason, we could miss the deadline.
And I'm concerned about purchase orders. We, you know, we have to go through the whole purchasing process, the paperwork that's necessary there to get that underway, and Motorola may have some concerns with that three-day timeline as well. But that's what our concerns are on the city's side. We want to make sure that we do not fumble a huge financial incentive that's, that's been offered to us.
What is the difference in the discount versus the non-discounted rate?
Seven point seven five six million dollars.
Good. What's that? Jane?
Yeah. All right. You know, based upon the committee and so forth, and I guess going through all of this, I can, I can do it either way. I, I have a feeling that if we did delay till next week, Motorola is not going to just walk away from the contract. I've got Guido after Tony, so, but I, I think this body needs to be comfortable, but there has been a lot of due diligence along the way.
I'm worried about the signatures. I'm worried about making sure that we've got all the correct paperwork filled out to actually get that purchase order ready to go and in the hands of Motorola by, by the end of their fiscal quarter on three thirty-one.
And the dates of those discounts you were talking about were listed within the request document?
Yeah, the proposal, the proposal laid out those discounts, a seven million dollar system discount and a seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar discount for early ordering of the subscriber equipment with a deadline of the end of the fiscal quarter, which is March thirty-first.
If I may put in perspective, we did have another bid that was about twelve million still from another vendor, but everything's been proceeding along the path with Motorola's.
All right. My wife's colleague next to me has said that we could take a ten-minute break just to review and look this over, although maybe what I was more looking to accomplish would be more of a conversation where the public would have a chance to view it in its entirety since it is a large dollar amount. But I understand the concerns of the purchasing department and Mr. Cassidy as well. I don't take the loss of seven million dollars lightly, for sure. So I guess leave the floor open for motions and debate. Cindy?
Can we call up the representative for Motorola?
Tony Casiba with Motorola.
Mr. Casiba, thanks for coming forward. Okay, so here's the thing. I go look for this, I look through it, and, and the numbers, I mean, we haven't had a chance to really look through it thoroughly with the numbers that are plugged in, but I see that your vice president, Bob Rommel, actually signed his, put his signature on the document last week, the sixteenth.
Correct.
Okay, and so have you been in contact with him today as these numbers have been plugged in?
Yes, I've actually been in contact with him this afternoon and had his authority to make these changes and utilize that signature page.
And so have, will you be signing on behalf of Motorola?
No, the executed agreement by Mr. Rommel will, takes place.
And is there, would you address the concern about the time element if we waited until next week, Monday, the twenty-eighth, so that the public could review this?
Well, there is a time element to the discounts that are available, and obviously we, we want to make every effort to try to make sure that you're comfortable with this. I think the committee and the groups that worked on this put a lot of time and effort into getting the contracts completed, getting all the Ts and Cs and all the items necessary to make this prepared for you. I think one of the things that you look at is, if we go to the twenty-eighth and there is any issues there, there's potentially significant discounts that go away. And I am tied to those, those are an end of quarter, so we are tied to those, to those discounts.
As of the thirty-first?
Correct. And that would be a fully executed contract received by our legal department.
Other questions?
Roy?
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
I hereby move to amend Bill Number sixteen R dash fifty-two by replacing the communication systems agreement, which is attached to the resolution with the communication systems agreement attached here, too. So this is the new, today's changes.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion on the motion to amend.
I think we should go ahead and do it today. I don't want to even risk seven point two million dollars.
Carl?
Yeah, and I appreciate Roy's making the motion. I, I agree. This isn't good form. I mean, this isn't the way we like to do business, for sure. But the proposal that, that we had, while the numbers of the contract were not filled out, the information, the fact sheet was present there, and the figures that were talked about in that fact sheet were, were in this, this same ballpark, nine point one to nine point six million. We've heard the reasons for the increases, so, so I think, I think we're okay.
Jane?
I concur, because I, I've worked with Mr. Walla and the legal team here, and I know that a lot of the business terms were negotiated upfront and as part of the RFP, so they've had time to digest the business terms, and that's what the contract really is about, all the business terms that we have all agreed to, and I think it's important that we keep moving this document forward.
Other discussion?
I think for clarification, this is just to amend and substitute, there'd also be a secondary, or second motion, or second vote to actually adopt it, actually determine its clarification.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All right, I, I appreciate all the hard work that's been done to get this to a place where we can vote on it by filling in blanks and adding attachments that weren't there. I still have heartburn that we're approving a nine point eight million dollar contract without the ability for the public to really have a good view at the final product. However, saving seven million dollars is in the best interest of the Lincoln taxpayers who are out there paying the, the sales tax right now, so I will vote yes on it, withstanding my objections to not letting the public view the entire product. Call the roll, please.
This is on the amendment.
This is on the amendment?
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Now on the main motion. Discussion. All right, I think we've had it. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to Bob Walla for negotiating that discount that can be extended to other municipalities should they wish to take advantage of it. That's making this work for more than just the city of Lincoln and its partners, and to all the people who've been working on this, including the committee that Councilman Camp serves on. There have been a number of people who have been involved in making this come to life, including the voters. So it's exciting to see that not only will we get this radio at a reduced, a cost far below the estimated price, but also that we'll get to move on getting our emergency response times improved in the city, potentially a year earlier than expected. Thank you.
All right, other discussion?
I just want to thank Motorola for having a representative here today so they could
confirm that they were in agreement with everything so that we could go forward.
All right. Call the roll, please, on the main motion.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing ordinances, second reading are items fifteen and sixteen. Ordances, third reading, item seventeen, street and alley vacation one five zero zero six, vacating South Fiftieth Street between A Street and Everett Street and Everett Street and Washington Street between South Fiftieth and South Fifty-second Street, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item eighteen, special permit twelve nineteen M, application of Bryan Med Center to construct a ninety-three thousand, two hundred eighty-six square foot medical office building, parking and green space, and a waiver to increase the building height of the district for expansion of Bryan Med Center East Campus on property located at South Fiftieth and A Street, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion.
Just a great example of the phrase, "slow and steady wins the race." You guys worked with a long time, over decades, to get this ready, and congratulations once again.
All right. Cindy?
Just hoping that they're exercising that kind of diligence out in the north part of the city, looking for a hospital out there. Just saying.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item nineteen, approving the Telegraph District Phase One redevelopment agreement between the city Edu LLC and four oh one Building LLC relating to the redevelopment of properties generally located at four oh one South Twenty-first Street and three thirty-three South Twenty-first Street for renovation of two existing structures and related improvements to be used for office, retail and parking, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Leary. Discussion.
We do have a motion to amend number one on this?
Yes. I would like to move motion to amend number one, and it's just clarifying some of the bond language and making it in accordance with the requirements placed on the developer and to correct information with respect to notices given to inquiries made of the developer.
Second.
Second by Roy. Discussion. All right, call the roll on the motion of amend number one.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, discussion on the main motion. Cindy?
I'm, I'm really excited about this project, and I, I am really reassured by the developers' ability and willingness to work with the telephone museum, which we, a number of us had an opportunity to tour there, and I think this is going to be a vibrant part of Lincoln.
All right, other discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty is amending the fiscal year fifteen sixteen CIP to authorize and appropriate one point six million in TIP funds for the Telegraph District Phase One project, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-one, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Telegraph District Phase One redevelopment project, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 22 is approving the lease agreement between the city and Nebraska Golf and Turf and Bruning State Bank for the lease of 120 golf carts and five utility vehicles for use by Parks and Rec, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Jane. Discussion. Call the roll.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.